Good evening, and welcome to this meeting of Troy City Council on Monday, May 2nd, 2022. My name is William Lutz. I'm president of council. I will lead us in the invocation pledge of allegiance tonight. Please stand. We can bow our heads. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this beautiful day, the day in which the sun was shining and we could feel your glory all around us. Lord, we give special thanks today for those men and women that serve our community and serve our nation overseas. Lord be with this council tonight as we make decisions for our community to always take care of the least and the last and the lost among us. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Rozell?
Here.
Mr. Pierce?
Present.
Mrs. Snee?
Here.
Mr. Widdon?
Here.
Mrs. Marshall?
Here.
Mr. Schilling?
Present.
Mr. Severt?
Here.
Mr. Twiss?
Motion to excuse Mr. Twiss.
Second.
It has been moved to excuse Mr. Twiss by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss is excused.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. This time, we will ask the mayor to recognize the outgoing members of the Mayor's Youth Council.
I'm going to call some of these kids up here. We've had a great time. We weren't able to do the Mayor's Youth Council the last couple of years, but we did this year, and we had a lot of fun. We had four events this year. We went to Hobart Arena, did a tour, did some ice skating. I did not ice skate. We had a strategic planning session and talked about the stuff that's good about Troy, what needs to be changed about Troy. We went to the fire department and police departments and had tours and chocolate milkshakes. And we went to Waco Air Museum and had a really nice time there and then ended up making rockets, which was a lot of fun. Had a fantastic year, fantastic group of kids. Parents, you should all be proud of them because we just had such a good time. I'm going to call your names. Seeing them only four times this year, I am struggling with a couple of them to learn their names. So, Leighton. Leighton Niles. Leighton is from St. Pat's Elementary. I gave you this. And on the back is a golden ticket to Grandpa Joe's Candy Shop. You get to fill a box of candy yourself, so don't use that. Just stay right here.
And don't give it to Dad.
Izzy. Or Islyn, that's her mom calls her. Not here, okay? Tiana, saw Tiana. Tiana's one of our homeschoolers. Tiana Tara. Taylor, Taylor's girl, saw her. Taylor Weichert. I've known this girl since she was a baby, so I had an easy time with her name. Kylie Middlestaff. I didn't see her. Cara? Didn't miss Cara here?
She's six days.
Oh. Didn't see Cara. Whitney. Saw Whitney. Whitney Walker. Forest Elementary. Elena. Elena Giblin. What school are you at? Haywood. Casey. Casey. Casey Jones. Troy Christian. We're all hot to tell. I didn't see one coming either. You guys had such a great time. I would love to do this again. You guys are going to have to come back to team leadership in a few years. Let's get a little bit older, and we'll kind of do some of the same stuff, but give the chance to get to know the city a little better. Thank you very much. And you're more than welcome to stay for this meeting. It's a long one.
Thank you, Mayor. This time, we will begin our first of two public hearings this evening. The first public hearing is on ordinance O-162022. We'll ask Mrs. Knight to read the ordinance.
An ordinance changing the zoning of in-lots 11465 and 11466 in the city of Troy, Ohio, from Miami County zoning of A2 general agriculture to the city zoning of AR agricultural residential zoning district.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. If you wish to participate in the public hearing, you have something to say on the ordinance, please come to the podium, give your name and address, and take as much time as you wish to consume. Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed, and we'll move on to the next public hearing of the evening for ordinance O-172022. Again, we'll ask Mrs. Knight to please read the ordinance.
An ordinance changing the zoning of in-lot 11400 in the city of Troy, Ohio, from Miami County zoning of A2 general agriculture to the city zoning of AR agricultural residential district. And changing the zoning of in-lot 11401 in the city of Troy, Ohio, from Miami County zoning of R1 AAA, one-family residential, to the city zoning of R2 single-family residence district.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Again, if you wish to address counsel on this ordinance, you are free to come to the podium, give your name and address, and take as much time as you wish to consume.
Hello. My name is Cheryl Gillette, and I live at 2055 Fenner Road, which is right next door to the one lot that is being asked to be annexed, Mr. Ferryman's. And I oppose it because the driveway going there runs right down my property line. If he would put the driveway on the other side, I wouldn't be opposed, but I moved out. My parents built that house in the country where the DMV is going across the street. I'd like to stay. I don't really want a driveway going down the side of my house, so I oppose it.
Okay. Just for a point of clarification, this is not for the annexation of the property, but rather for the zoning, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, this has already been annexed into the city. Now, this is the zoning issue.
Okay, for the zoning.
Anything else you want to add?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for attending. Anyone else in the audience wish to participate in this public hearing on this ordinance? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing for ordinance O-172022 closed. Mrs. Knight, we ask you to read a summary in minutes of the April 16th, 2022, meeting of Troy City Council.
Amendments of council, April 18, 2022. Committee reports. Buildings and Utilities Committee reported regarding the North Madison Street Stormwater Lift Station and recommended amendment to the Professional Services Agreement in the amount of $10,000, authorized bidding in the amount of $1 million, and allocated an additional $150,000 to the project. Community and Economic Development Committee recommended that ordinance number O-1222 and zoning be approved. Also regarding the Enterprise Zone Tax Incentive Review Council recommendations, recommended that the Enterprise Zone agreements be continued and the Town Park Tiff also be continued. Community Partnerships Committee recommended that legislation be prepared, transferring the property known as Fire Station 11 to the Community Improvement Corporation. Also recommended that legislation be prepared, authorizing agreement with the Troy Strawberry Festival for the 2022 agreement. Law and Ordinance Committee recommended changes to the Mobile Food Vendors Ordinance. Personnel Committee reported regarding an appointment to the Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council, and Mark Douglas and Larry Smith were reappointed. Resolution Number R-292022, recommendations of Tax and Cenit Review Council regarding the Enterprise Zones, first reading and adopted. Resolution Number R-302022, except the recommendation of Tax and Cenit Review Council regarding the Town Park Tiff was given first reading and was adopted. Resolution Number R-312022, amendment to agreement, Professional Services, regarding the North Madison Street Stormwater Lift Station Project, first reading and adopted. Resolution Number R-3222, allocation of CBPG funds or economic development revolving loan funds to the North Madison Street Project was given first reading and adopted. Resolution Number R-332022, increasing authorization for the bidding of the North Madison Street Stormwater Lift Station Project, first reading and adopted. A resolution in memoriam to Thomas Force was approved. Ordinance Number O-122022, zoning of the Strayer Annexation was given third reading and was adopted. Ordinance Number O-142022, amending codified ordinances regarding mobile food vehicles was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance Number O-152022, an agreement with the CIC regarding the Fire Station 11 property, first reading and adopted. Ordinance Number O-162022, a zoning was given first reading. Ordinance Number O-172022, a zoning was given first reading. Ordinance Number O-182022, agreement with Troy Strawberry Festival for the 2022 festival was given first reading and was adopted. Following comments, council adjourn 7:54.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. House Counsel, we should suspend the minutes this evening?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved to approve the minutes by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
All right. Well, get comfy, folks. We have a lot of committee reports this evening. We'll begin with the Community Partnerships Committee with one report from Mr. Rozell.
Thank you, Mr. President. On April 25th, committee members Schilling and Rozell met to hear additional comments from the Troy Strawberry Festival, Inc., board and the request that the door be suspended on Troy Strawberry Festival dates of June 3rd and June 4th. It is a recommendation of this committee that the door not be suspended during the dates in its operational during the Troy Strawberry Festival. This respectfully submitted by Jeffrey A. Schilling, Todd E. Severt, and myself, William G. Rozell, as chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rozell. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Community and Economic Development Committee with three reports this evening, and Mr. Schilling.
Okay, thank you. On April 25th, this committee met to consider the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee that a new loan be approved for the Small Business Development, SBD revolving loan fund, to the owners of Fermentum Enterprises LLC for funds to assist with the purchase of equipment to operate Crafted and Cured at 8 South Market Street. This committee recommends that the legislation be prepared, authorizing the approval of an SBD loan to Fermentum Enterprises LLC based on the terms recommended by the Loan Review Committee as noted in a detailed report, and that the Director of Public Service and Safety be authorized to execute any related documents. This committee further supports emergency legislation so that the loan can be approved without delay and the project proceed. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself, Jeff Schilling, as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Mr. Schilling, please continue.
Okay. On April 25th, this committee met to review information related to a request for a new moratorium of 60 days on the acceptance of new applications for certificates of appropriateness to allow demolitions in the city of Troy Historic Preservation Overlay District. The background of this request is discussed in the detailed report. The recommendation is to provide staff additional time to provide a report on this subject. It is a recommendation of the undersigned that legislation be prepared, authorizing a new moratorium of 60 days commencing May 15th, 2022, on the acceptance of new applications for certificates of appropriateness to allow immediate demolitions related to public safety concerns in the city of Troy Historic Preservation Overlay District. Emergency legislation is supported so that there is no break in the time period of the moratorium. Committee member Pierce had indicated he would submit a minority report. Mr. Pierce later indicated that he is comfortable with moving forward on the moratorium on demolition while staff finalizes the report, and this was respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself, Jeff Schilling, as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, please continue, Mr. Schilling.
Okay. On April 25th, this committee met to review utility and drainage assessments required for future development associated with a Waco airfield plat that is creating four new lots. Easements can only be accepted by council action. Recommendation is this committee recommends that legislation be prepared, authorizing acceptance of the easements of the Waco airfield plat, and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute any documents related to the easements. This committee supports emergency legislation to not delay recording of the plat and the sale of the newly created lots. Again, respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself, Jeff Schilling, as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Finance Committee. We have a special report by Mr. Rozell.
Yes. On April 25th, committee members Rozell and Phillips met to consider the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee that the 2019 loan to Fort Sun's Development LLC for the property 8 South Market Street be modified with existing balance to be refinanced for 15 years at a rate of 3.25%. The committee? This committee supports the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee of approving this loan modification application as meeting the intent of the Small Business Development revolving loan program, and recommends that legislation be prepared, approving the modified loan for Fort Sun's Development LLC as discussed in the detailed report. This committee further supports emergency legislation so that the new loan can be closed without delay. This is respectfully submitted by Bobby Phillips, myself, and Mr. Severt as chairman.
Any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we'll go to Mr. Severt for the final two Finance Committee reports.
Thank you, President Lutz, and thank you, Mr. Rozell, for reading that report. On April 25th, committee members Phillips and Rozell met to review the request that some excess public property be declared surplus and offered for sale. It is a recommendation of the committee that legislation be prepared to declare the below listing of three vehicles, chairs, and tasers as surplus and authorize the sale of these items. Now reported, respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Rozell, and myself as chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Severt. Are there any comments or questions? Mr. Severt, please continue.
Thank you. This will be legislation regarding the ARPA Fund. On April 25th, committee members Phillips and Rozell met to review the request for legislation accounting for an establishing Fund 251 for the acceptance of the funds related to the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, known by the acronym of ARPA. It is a recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to establish Fund 251 and set forth any other details regarding the fund, so the legislation is enacted for the reporting deadline. The committee would request that this have emergency legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Severt. Are there any comments or questions on this report? We'll go to the final four reports this evening, and the Streets and Sidewalks Committee and Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, sir. On April 25th, this committee met to consider the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission that council accepts the dedication of 1.385 acres of in-lot 6503 as public right-ofway. This is located along the north side of West Market Street between Fenner Road, Edgewood Drive, and I-75. It is the recommendation that this committee does support the Troy Planning Commission and recommends that legislation be prepared, accepting the dedication of 1.385 acres of in-lot 6503 as right-ofway, and this is respectfully submitted from Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, please continue.
The committee also met on April 25th to consider the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission that a three-foot alley of record between in-lots 380 and 381 at 121 Public Square Northeast be vacated. The alley does not physically exist, and there is no need to retain it on the records. The committee supports the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission and recommends that legislation be prepared, vacating the three-foot alley of record shown between in-lots 380 and 381 at 121 Public Square Northeast. This committee supports emergency legislation so that a pending sale of the property is not further delayed. This is also respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Any comments or questions? Please continue.
Continuing with another staff report on April 25th, the committee met to consider the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission that a 30-foot public walk between in-lots 3386 and 3387 on York Lane be vacated. The city has no need of retaining this property as a public walk. This committee supports the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission and recommends that legislation be prepared, vacating the 30-foot public walk between in-lots 3386 and 3387 on York Lane, and this is again respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Any comments or questions? Mr. Phillips, please continue with the last report.
In our last item on April 25th, the committee met to review the request that additional authorization be approved for three capital projects. Detail on each is below and included in the attached memo from staff. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to increase authorization for the West Main Street Reconstruction Project Phase 1 from $7.7 million to $9 million. Number two, increased bidding authorization for the West Main Street Duct Bank Project from $1 million to $1.5 million. And number three, increased authorization for the 2022 paving program from $1.01 million to $1.115 million. And this committee further supports emergency legislation on these items as it is necessary to move forward with the contracting or bidding of the projects without delay, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Any comments or questions on that report? Seeing none, we move on to citizen comments for items on the agenda. You've heard 11 committee reports. We have six resolutions and nine ordinances up for discussion. If you wish to address counsel on any of those items, you're welcome to come to the podium, give your name and address. You have two minutes to address counsel, and Mr. Kerber is our timekeeper.
Hello, my name is Chris Manning. I'm speaking on behalf of ordinance O-242022, the 60-day moratorium. I am the vice president of the Troy Historic Preservation Alliance, a nonprofit organization that advocates for the preservation, restoration, and repurposing of Troy's historic places. The Troy Historic Preservation Alliance is supportive of the recommendation to extend the moratorium on demolitions in downtown Troy for an additional 60 days. Since January, THPA has met regularly with other local nonprofit organizations focused on historic preservation to develop ideas on how best to advance a culture of stewardship in the downtown. We have discussed not only ideas for strengthening Troy's zoning code, but also incentives and educational initiatives to encourage reinvestment in our historic downtown. We recognize that all of us have to own this cultural of stewardship together. We hope that all downtown stakeholders can have an inclusive dialogue about the future of our downtown in the next couple of months. We have learned a lot through this process and look forward to sharing our ideas and hearing the ideas of others. An extension of the moratorium will allow city officials and local community groups like THPA to continue to work towards solutions that will benefit Troy citizens, property owners, and other stakeholders while preserving our irreplaceable historic places. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Manning. Anyone else wish to address counsel on any of the items on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move into resolutions. We'll ask Mrs. Knight to please read the first resolution of the evening, Resolution R-342020.
Resolution Number R-342022. Resolution, amending Resolution Number R-182022, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the 2022 paving program, declaring an emergency. This increases the authorization to $1,115,000, first reading.
Motion to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Three reading rule has been suspended, been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Will you please read the next resolution for the evening, Resolution R-352022?
Resolution Number R-352022. Resolution, amending Resolution Number R-572021 as amended by Resolution Number R-242022, increasing the authorization for the West Main Street Duck Bank Improvements Project and declaring an emergency. This increases the authorization to $1,500,000, first reading.
Move for suspension, second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
For adoption.
Second.
It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next resolution for the evening, Resolution R-362022?
Resolution Number R-362022. Resolution, amending Resolution Number R-32022, increasing the authorization for the West Main Street Improvement Project Phase 1 and declaring an emergency. This increases the authorization to $9 million, first reading.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Widdon, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended, been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next resolution for the evening, Resolution R-372022?
Resolution Number R-372022. Resolution affirming establishing the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Fund, and the use of funds consistent with requirements and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.[1733.64]
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Severt, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R. 38, 2022?
Resolution number R. 38, 2022. Resolution approving the application of Fermentum Enterprises LLC for loan assistance from the Small Business Development Revolving Loan Fund and declaring an emergency. This is a new loan in the amount of $150,000, as recommended by the Loan Review Committee. First reading.
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Rozell, was that Mr. Pierce? Mr. Widdon? Sorry, Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved to adopt the resolution. The three reading rule has been suspended. Motion made by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
I'll recuse myself.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the last resolution for the evening, Resolution R. 39, 2022?
Resolution number R. 39, 2022. Resolution approving the application of For-Suns Development LLC for loan assistance from the Small Business Development Revolving Loan Fund and declaring an emergency. This is in accordance with the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee. First reading.
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Widdon. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
I will abstain from this vote as well.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved to adopt the resolution. The three reading rules have been suspended. Motion made by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
I will abstain as well. Thank you.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the first ordinance of the evening, ordinance O-16, 2022?
Ordinance number O-16, 2022. An ordinance changing the zoning of in lots 11465 and 11466 in the city of Troy, Ohio, from Miami County zoning of A2 general agriculture to the city zoning of AR agricultural residential zoning district. This is the second reading and has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. I assume this will be the subject of a committee meeting next Monday.
Correct. In consideration that we had a public hearing tonight and a future committee meeting on this item, this will stand as the second reading. We will have a third reading on it at our next meeting. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next ordinance of the evening, ordinance O-17, 2022?
Ordinance number O-17, 2022. An ordinance changing the zoning of in lot 11400 in the city of Troy, Ohio, from Miami County zoning of A2 general agriculture to the city zoning of AR agricultural residential district and changing the zoning of in lot 11401 in the city of Troy, Ohio, from Miami County zoning of R1 AAA, one-family residential, to the city zoning of R2, single-family residence district. This is also as recommended by the Troy Planning Commission, and this is the second reading and also will be a subject of a committee meeting on Monday.
In consideration of the fact that it will be a future committee meeting and we held a public hearing tonight, this will be held over for a third reading to be discussed at our next meeting. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next ordinance of the evening, excuse me, ordinance O-19, 2022?
Ordinance number O-19, 2022. Ordinance accepting dedication of utility and drainage easements for the Waco Airfield Platte along South County Road 25A in the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Severt, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next ordinance of the evening, ordinance O-20, 2022?
Ordinance number O-20, 2022. Ordinance accepting the dedication of right-of-way associated with the Harson Investments Platte in the city of Troy, Ohio. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission, and this is the first reading.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Widdon, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next ordinance of the evening, ordinance O-21, 2022?
Ordinance number O-21, 2022. An ordinance vacating a three-foot wide unimproved alley between part of in lot 380 and part of in lot 381 in the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is further located at 121 Public Square Northeast. Troy Planning Commission has recommended approval. First reading.
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Widdon, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Severt. Any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next ordinance of the evening, ordinance O-22, 2022?
Ordinance number O-22, 2022. An ordinance vacating a 30-foot wide public walk between in lots 3386 and 3387 on York Lane in Westbrook Subdivision Number 1 in the city of Troy, Ohio. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. First reading.
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Widdon. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Move for adopt.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's moved to adopt the ordinance by Mrs. Snee, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next ordinance of the evening, ordinance O-23, 2022?
Ordinance number O-23, 2022. Ordinance declaring municipally-owned personal property is no longer needed for municipal purposes and authorizing the sale of such property. First reading.
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Severt, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Move for adopt.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.[1250.73] Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next ordinance of the evening, Ordinance O-24, 2022?
Ordinance number O-24, 2022, ordinance imposing moratorium for a period of 60 days on the acceptance of new applications for certificates of appropriateness for the demolition or removal of a building or structure within the city of Troy Historic Preservation Overlay District and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Motion to move to suspend.